Good evening. Today is Monday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. We are at the Green Ladel, and we'll call the meeting to order at five-thirty P M. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilor Harmon, would you like to start introductions?
Scott Harmon, City Council Representative to the School Committee.
Donna Galant, Ward Seven.
Megan Heard, Ward Six.
Craig Sharpentier, Ward Four.
Elizabeth Thimes, Ward Three.
Janet Bowden, Ward Two.
Phoenix Mulholland, Ward One.
Megan Parks, At Large.
Jake Lingus, Superintendent.
Karen Puckett, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is to receive and potentially vote on the nomination for Cassidy Delcourt for the Special Ed Assistant Principal Position for Lewiston Middle School.
And Anna Bryant will come up to help present. This may look a little bit like deja vu because Cassidy was before you not too long ago as an interim nominee, and we've worked through the process and good.
Good evening. So I would like to reintroduce you to Cassidy Delcourt. I would like to nominate her to be our Assistant Principal for Special Education. We have had the opportunity to get to know Cassidy, and through a process, we really feel like she would be the best fit for our current admin team and for what we need at the middle school. As you heard before, she has worked in the district for several years. She started out as an ed tech, became a teacher, and then was our district Intervention Coordinator for a few years, and now she's has an opportunity to be in a building. So I would like to nominate her for this position.
Thank you. Would you like to share anything?
Sure. I just wanted to share that it's been, what, three, maybe four weeks since I started in the interim role. I've really enjoyed my time at Lewiston Middle School. I thank you for the opportunity of the interim, and I look forward to the opportunity going forward.
Thank you. Any member heard?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve Cassidy Delcourt for the Special Ed Assistant Principal Position for the Lewiston Middle School.
Thank you. Seconded by Member Bowden. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations again. Agenda item number four is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that members would like set aside? Seeing none, the Consent Agenda is adopted. Agenda item number five is Public Input. Members of the public may address the School Committee for up to three minutes on non-agenda items now and on agenda items later. Comments that pertain to staff, personnel matters, or a student issue should be directed to the Superintendent or the appropriate staff member of Lewiston Public Schools. Public comments shall be directed to the School Committee and be brief, not repetitive, and related to the matter at hand. Before starting, please state your name, address, and affiliation to Lewiston Public Schools. Are there any members of the public that would like to speak?
Matthew Agron, Ward Four. From the council meeting, committee meeting on nine-nine, it was revealed that our school is using facial recognition and tracking within our school grounds. I would be interested in hearing more about how it's being monitored and how long it's being kept because it's well-known that facial rec software doesn't do well for those of our minority community. Please, at a future meeting, would you guys look at laying out a vision for the school system two and five years out? Show us not only Jake's plan for bringing back our students and what the savings will look like, but what the staffing for those students coming back will also look like, what forecasted teacher needs and because potential student enrollment, and what it will look like when C D S is our issue, not the state in Maine. Yes, in theory, states can be paying those bills, but given the number of children in the city who need services, do we have any idea how many kids that actually will be, how many staff that will be, the cost to handle it on our end if the state funds are not enough, or knowing the state, not there? Finally, at the same meeting, it was said that you guys have the ability to shut down public comment at the public meetings of the School Committee. I'd like to know where that ability comes from. There are only two rules I could find for public comment at the School Committee. One's from the City Charter, and one's the public input part of this agenda. This is the only way by the rules adopted by your committee that we can speak. The idea that the citizens and taxpayers can be silenced at the will of this committee is greatly disturbing for it's the right to petition our government for redress that is protected by the First Amendment. Unfortunately, this isn't something that's just here. It's something we are seeing across the country, but in play by more and more elected bodies to limit public comments. Our City Council currently limits us to a single fifteen-minute comment block. Please, look at your own rules, make sure it's not easy to silence us, and then publish formal rules like the City Council has on your website. Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, Agenda item number six is to receive a presentation on the international travel trip that went to the United Kingdom and Ireland, and Ms. Allard will present.
So Bree's going to come up to share some pictures. What I'm going to try to share my screen, and there's some audio, and we think Austin has that figured out for us. So we'll give that a try. And I also want to use this as an opportunity to remind you of our policy update and shift. So while this practice has shifted away from school committee-specific and school-specific sponsored events or not-sponsored events, Bree did offer to bring back their experience because that was school-sponsored at the time, and she continues to organize trips for students following the new process that's separate of school-specific processes. But just so as a reminder, so we may not see these moving forward. Maybe we will, but just wanted to say out loud for those watching that we've shifted that process, but the opportunities are still available for kids. See if I can share my screen.
It was already on. I'm going to keep it brief myself for speaking and just let the photographs and the video really tell you the story of our trip. So as a quick reminder, we went to Ireland, Wales, Scotland, and England this summer with students from Lewiston High School. We were there for about two weeks. It was an educational trip, so we went to many different museums and castles and historical sites, and we tried a lot of food. I did not include pictures of food because I don't think those, I don't like to take food pictures. But the kids definitely got to try things like fish and chips. Haggis in Scotland wasn't very popular, and bangers and mash, which is just sausage and mashed potatoes in Dublin. So they got to experience all of that. Go ahead. Yes. In this photograph, you can see, remember, we got a small group going from Lewiston High School, so they combined us with and we worked closely with prior to the trip, Levitt Area High School in Turner. So that's our full group at the archway in Dublin, at the Epic Museum, which told us a lot about the Irish immigrants. Hopefully, you recognize maybe some of these students from Lewiston High School. Obviously, went to London and saw Big Ben. And it was a neat opportunity because we had parents who were able to travel with some of their students as well and experience. So on the left, you see a mom with her two daughters. On the right, you see my son. Hold it. Yes. I have high expectations for my children. And as group leaders, we will do anything to make sure our kids are safe and having fun. And if that means wearing bright pink neon vests to guide our kids through a museum because those are the museum requirements, we will wear the silly little vests. But they laughed at us and we had lots of fun, and some more students from the high school. That's your only food picture. So in their own words.
I'm Addison Milledon, seventeen years old, from Lewiston, Maine. And do you want to just go straight into the question?
Go for it, if you remember. What do you, what have you liked most?
Liked most was probably the castle. It was really pretty, the one. And Wales was very pretty, and we took a lot of pictures there.
Yeah, and what you've not liked as much?
Not liked was definitely the ice water. It made me a little mad that there's no ice anywhere.
They come up with some of the weirdest things, and you'll see in the next one. The things that they don't like are very mind-
I don't remember all the points that were asked for me to speak about, but I think I remember the first one was what I thought was coolest about the trip. I thought the coolest thing was getting to see other places, you know? This truly once-in-a-lifetime experience. Not everybody gets to do it. But we've seen, I mean, we've been, I think I did the math last night. We've been to fifteen cities in thirteen, twelve. This was just thirteen days, so count a day, this was like sixteen or seventeen. I don't even, well, if that's like you count like all the places we stop and stuff. But yeah, for me, that was the coolest part, getting to see. So like, we toured basically all of the UK, UK and northeast. Okay, east is this way. Eastern Ireland. Yeah, that was the coolest part for me, I think.
Okay, anything you haven't enjoyed this month?
Anything? Well, sharing a bed with Trent has not been fun. I love you, Trent, but I'm looking forward to having my own bed.
I'm Addison.
Double click there. There you go. A few other quotes. You can read them on the screen in front of you as well from some of the travelers, but they definitely made some lifelong bonds. A lot of these students in particular, some of those are, those are all students from Lewiston High School, and a couple were friends, two of them you can see are twin sisters. But they didn't really know each other before going, so even as Lewiston students, the school is huge, right? So you're not going to necessarily know everyone in the building. So they made friends with other Lewiston High School students as well as the students at Levitt Area High School, and really created those friendships and bonds, and really got to have that hands-on education that you just can't get. The same way you can learn about some of these places in history classes and some of the events in history classes, but really able to go and walk the ground and see what life and imagine what life would have been like in those times. And in the modern times, too, it was a life-changing experience for the students, and they just want to say, last slide. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to go, and we look forward to our next trip. We have Iceland next summer, and we just launched Greece and Italy this past Wednesday, and I had twenty students sign up for the trip, so we're super excited for that. So thank you for the opportunity.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I'm so sorry.
No, that's all right. No? All right, you're all set. Thank you. Agenda item number seven is to receive an update on grant, on the grant awarded for school improvement with safety and technology.
So Bill will come up to share some additional information, but just kind of an overview. We learned last week that as this group knows, we submit for grants all the time, always trying to find a way to fund certain things, and this was submitted a while back, and we had done a lot of work, a lot of different people that we'll recognize at some point. But just to share the update, it's the S V S P P V S-
S V P P.
S V.
School Violence Prevention Prevention Program, which is another acronym, which is part of another acronym, COPS, or Community Oriented Policies and Services, which is part of the DOJ.
So just a quick history going back in time, when we were looking for ways to fund the camera updates. So this is going back a couple of years, really. We had initially put in a grant for cameras, equipment, logistical pieces, hardening the outside of buildings, running cabling to have all of those things done to try to soften the cost to us here locally. We submitted that once. It got kicked back. We didn't get it, but we had some suggestions for improvements, and we had more details on the project that we were doing, so it got submitted again. And this is the one that we have been awarded, but it's, do you want to share a little detail about what?
Yeah, so it's a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. It's to, the main purpose is to look at access controls, so how we have access to our buildings. And so we're going to be exploring some new technologies with that, and then also trying to make sure that all of our schools are on the same platform. So we did kind of embark four years ago in access controls and cameras for our schools, and some of our schools were on a different technology than the other ones, so we're trying to streamline that. So this grant was huge in being able to do that, and then obviously to explore different technologies that we might use to make our schools and entrances safer.
Member Galant.
Yeah, so the discussion I think we had last week or the week before was having wands or something to, would that be, would that be one of those things that we could use this for, or?
So these grants are written well in advance, and we have to prescribe how we will use the funds, so we have to use them then in the ways in which they were approved. One question that came up kind of offline before the meeting was can we use these funds for SROs? While we have pursued other ways to get SROs, this wasn't one of those submissions, so we can't use the funds differently than for what they've been allocated for. Is what written somewhere?
Is what they're, what the funds will be allocated for, is that?
Yes, we wrote a very long, very detailed grant specifically for these access controls and upgrades.
I just wondered if that's accessible to us, or? Okay, thank you.
Member Bowden?
Thank you. Kind of coughing. I'm eating nuts over here. Sorry. Can you go into more detail about what security upgrades you're looking for for the entrances? I mean, I don't know how much detail you want to go into, but I'm just curious, like, what? Like, do we have alarms on the doors? Is that what we're looking to do? Like, what is that?
So you're kind of starting with the bare access controls. That would be badges going into schools. And so some of our schools, actually, almost all of our schools are completed with an update, but we have, we were running three systems. Now we're running two systems. So what we would be trying to do is get all of those badge controls onto one system. So that would be kind of phase one or kind of a part of that. Then the other thing is, is looking at your entrances and what kind of things can we do to harden those to ensure that the right people are coming in. And so that's what that additional kind of access control in, working in concert with the cameras. So what can sometimes happen is if a door were left open and somebody came through that door, it would sound an alarm, but the cameras would be alerted, too, and they would follow that person through the school. So it's, there's like these emerging technologies, and this was one of those things where like, we got to go for this grant, and it was really kind of, the grant was written based on bringing all of our systems for access control and camera work into the same system.
Member Heard?
I was just going to add, Karen's able to pull up. It was June third, twenty-four, that we shared with you that we're going to submit for this grant that you approved submitting for it. So this was from June to last week that that process took.
Okay, so I have two things. One, did we do any of the upgrades that we said we were going to do in the, in the grant, thinking like maybe we wouldn't get the grant? So has any money already been spent on things that you wrote down in the grant that you were going to do or upgrade?
Yeah, potentially two places. We were the last places to do upgrades for, that had the old system. So remember I said there was three access control systems. Longley didn't have one, and McMahon was on the old system. So those have, even as we were writing the grant, we were planning on doing those, and then it was like, oh, this will, this will be even better to, you know, look at different technologies with cameras, say. So there's some planning that's still got to go into what we finalize, but what we wrote in the grant was in that vein of access controls, so.
Okay, so even though the money, we've already spent money on, we'll still be able to use that money to further along that process or for other things, even though we've already?
Yeah, go ahead.
Could I, could I chime in on this one? So I think a couple of pieces. One is between the grant and L C I P, and you approved to expense some unexpended local dollars last year to take some steps in this process. We are a large district, and there is a lot still left to do, so it doesn't leave me feeling like there's excess of we can do something kind of extra. It leaves me feeling like all of these costs have continued to go up, but this, this bump will allow us to expedite and get onto one platform, which is something we thought would be two, maybe three years out. Hopefully, this can be this grant one year out, you know, as far as getting the work done. But we're looking at some other technologies, too, that I'm happy to talk about a little more down the road once we have more feedback.
Um, so I'm going to try and say this in the nicest way possible. All the technology in the world is great, and we can get all the great money that we, that they offer, but if we can't control access into our buildings, then that technology means nothing. So the fifty access doors that they have at high school, if those are not locked, kept locked, kept closed, the technology means nothing. So I am all four hundred percent of using technology and the cameras and all the things that we need to do, but I'm also really, really excited about general locks for our doors. If that makes sense. I know it sounds so simple. In my mind, it probably is. It's probably much bigger than that, but I just feel like we have so many entry points, especially at the high school, entry and exit points where people are coming and going, that it's great with all this new stuff, but if we can't keep the dang doors locked, then, I mean, it kind of doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I, what I like about this grant is exactly what you said, is that this will help us with the access points more specifically, which is something that's costly, but this, this funding will certainly help.
Member Galant?
Yeah, I know in our facilities meeting, we were able to see the camera, the cameras work. Is it possible for the rest of the committee to see that, or even the public? I don't, I don't know what the constraints are, privacy and all those things, but I think it would be, I think it would be good to, for at least the committee to see what's, what those cameras are like, and if possible, for, for, you know, parents in the community to see that.
Yeah, we, take a look at what we might take for an approach on that. I do want to be a little guarded about what we share publicly. I think the tools that we have are helpful. They're not invincible, but I also don't want, I don't want people looking at that information from a lens that would potentially show opportunities that we don't want to share aloud.
Yeah, I understand. I was just, I was hoping it would bring, it would bring some comfort or some, you know, with things that are, that are happening in our city. I think, you know, they could use a dose of maybe a little bit of security.
Member Bowden?
Thank you. So is this grant that you wrote for specifically just for the high school? So these funds could be used potentially all through every, every school, and even maybe the new building we purchased that needs stuff done to it? Yeah, okay. Yep. So do you have plans for that, or are you just a hundred percent like, we're going with just the high school?
No, we're going with the district, so these are definitely going to be going through all of our buildings. This is gonna, this is going to benefit all of our buildings.
Perfect.
You know, Jake alluded that we, we, we applied for this grant last year kind of in the eleventh hour because these are the federal grants, you know, you go into their system. And so we at least kind of got the trial run last year of what it was like, and then this year felt, and the I T team and some others will get recognized, but they did a, you know, a lion's share of the work along with a consultant to get this grant. So it was really like, wait, what? We, we got it? So this is, there's something to really celebrate here that, that we were able to get this grant, but it will benefit all the schools. And we, you know, we got a, we got some planning to do as well with it, but the scope is kind of there for us. Now we just got to put some meat on that.
It's separate of this grant, just grants in general. We're always looking for grants to submit and try to get the time to write them and submit them, but I would say for every twenty grants we write, we get feedback and maybe a little next step on one of them. And I don't think that's atypical. I think that's just kind of how it is, so. But it's exciting to be recognized for the work that folks did to satisfy the criteria of this grant, to receive those funds.
Member McGloughlin?
Yeah, I feel free with the federal grants. Great job. Good. And congratulations. Just to maybe put a finer point on the topic earlier about the budgeting. So is this enough to get at least the access controls piece to the finish line, or is there going to be more local share or other things that need to go into it?
Between the L C I P and this grant, if the scope was just to stay at the access controls and get us all onto one system, we will, we should be succeeding with that.
In theory, once this work, current work is done with these funds, will, like, say Jake or somebody be able to, like, from one location log into any school camera system and see it from one spot? Will it be that centralized, or? No? Yes? Okay.
So from a camera standpoint, yeah, and that's, yeah, and that's why, again, going to the two, the three system thing is, we can sort of kind of do that now, but you got to log into two systems. And so this is going to be one system. You go in there and you'd see all the schools and, you know, the mapping and everything would be done the same. Also, for access control standpoints of life safety for other agencies that need to get into our buildings, we're going to be able to just program that for badge access control on one system and not be like, oh, make sure that we did this in both systems before we give this to L P D or something, so.
I think this kind of grant opens up other conversations, too, that we haven't been able to have because we didn't have the system to even try. So for example, at the, the incident in Georgia recently, folks there have I Ds that they can push multiple times, and it alerts the system no matter who you are. Those are carried around with people. That's something that we have actually looked into in the past, but our access controls are so out of date that that wouldn't function with a modern system that also does that. So updating these systems, we'll be smart about it, but we're hopeful that when we do it, it will allow us to look at other systems that might increase, whether it's response, safety, those kinds of things. This, it's a nice-to-have grant. It's going to take some work to do, but again, it opens up doors and conversations that we couldn't even have before because it was like, we need to secure our doors before we talk about the I D we might issue. And with, with resources being tight, it limited that scope, so this will open up new conversations.
Is what you're describing sort of like panic buttons that the teachers would have in the rooms, or?
Well, there are some I D systems out there where it's actually your, your badge actually has it built into the badge, and you can do things with the badge remotely as long as you're on grounds. There's some other smart systems that we could consider, whether it's student I Ds, so it could be, work for everything from access to the building for staff, all the way through a kid getting lunch or a snack at lunch. So they make different smarter devices that, I'm not saying we will go that route, but we can start to look into those potentials that might work across different areas of service and access that before we just couldn't because it was so outdated.
Member Bowden?
I'm just curious. What would be the potential vote that we need to do on this agenda item?
So really, this one, I didn't have, I don't think I had a vote on this one. I think it's the next one. Is there potential one on this one? Yeah, I think it's number eight. Yeah. Yeah, no, you're fine. Sometimes I do that.
Member Galant?
I think just one more question. Has, once you get this up and running, will there be funds available or part of this fund saved for when? Available or part of this fund saved for when, you know, occasional updates or occasional maintenance? That needs to come along, you know, have we thought about that part, what we need to do to, to keep it current?
We have, um, so for example, the systems require cloud-based computing, um, and, and storage. Uh, we subscribe to those services, so that's, it's part of operation budget, so it is part of our metrics. So what systems do we want to go with and why that is, that ongoing annual cost? Camera replacement, life cycle, lifespan of the cameras, that's all part of our thinking. Uh, but we, I don't think we'll ever be done with costs, is it, is it really this, because it's technology-based? But uh, we, we do look at those and not just the cost of the service, but what other services might they provide? Now that our system will have a more robust backbone.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to say, just reiterate that, I'm up here talking and I was the one that got to hit the submit button. Because I have the dot gov ID to be able to do that. But really, there was a team, um, that was led by our IT that, that made this so competitive, so they did great work on that.
Thank you, IT people.
Agenda item number eight is to receive an update and potentially vote on a grant awarded for our technical center equipment and discuss the need for a referendum.
So it's, it's the night of grant updates, so uh, Director Callahan's too, here too, and Bill can speak to it. But it, just as a quick overview, um, kind of in a hurry. Uh, a request for proposals or, or requests for applications was pushed out last year to apply for. Um, technical center-related equipment, it's pretty narrow in scope. It can't be used for certain things like infrastructure, you can't put a new roof on a building or, in our case, we wanted to upgrade. Um, some of the, the power subs, uh, panels that are in the shops because they're, they're so dated. Um, but fast forward, uh, Rob and his team were able to put together a list of items that could be submitted for this grant. Uh, and we just found out that we were approved, but it's a unique grant and that it's through the bond bank. Which means you have to go through a bond bank process, which may require a referendum locally. We're, we're in conversation with legal right now, we know of some districts who have denied this offering. Uh, because they are smaller districts that have, say, ten towns that they report to. And you'd have to have a referendum at all of those, however, from a municipal perspective, we're trying to get clarification with legal if the city council can approve this. Uh, because it's a bond, uh, so anything we do with bonds requires steps of approval. If it needs to go to referendum, I've talked to Kathy Montello from the city and she said that there's, there is a turnaround time. We'd probably be looking at, if we were able to move this quickly, a December or January referendum. Uh, i- if, if it needs a referendum, it may just need city council approval. But for us to take the next step, we wanted to get your approval to pursue this. Uh, and here's, here's how the, from what we understand, the function of this, the items are already approved. And the, the bond bank will issue the funds directly to us, we do not have to pay back. So this is grant-like, but because of the, what the path of the money, it requires different levels of approval. Part of that thinking is, uh, because this is over a million dollars, um, or just under, um, just under, right? Was it nine, nine eighty, uh, nine hundred eighty thousand? Um, and we can get you more details on that, uh, from equipment perspective, but it's things like. Um, an e-vehicle that is designed for learners to take apart fully and put back together. So that as we're training our auto mechanic students, um, they'll be ready to work in the, the EV kind of realm when they go to job sites. Um, engineering kits that can work not just at the high school level, but could also be used to engage students with, with uh. Different modeling at a younger age, and then the, the list kind of goes on and we could share that, like I said, but. Because of the bond process, we can't just accept the grant and go do it. We have to satisfy the steps in, in main statute and also local charter. Um, it doesn't exceed the, there's a ratio out there, if we exceed the ratio. Uh, from a, a school perspective, it has to go to referendum, that number's around seven million dollars and it, it varies by. Uh, there's a metric based on uh. Evaluation and s- some kind of breakdown of what the valuation is and what percent of, of A and B is. I can go get it for you if you want, but it's, it's more complicated than, than it might be worth. Because this doesn't exceed that amount, there's some thinking from legal initially that you may be able to just pass this at the school committee. And then the city council level to receive those funds. The rationale that I've heard from others and talking to other superintendents and, and regional directors, in Rob and Bill, uh, and Adam. Some districts can't float this kind of cash flow. Lewiston as a city is big enough to say, okay, if you need to purchase that vehicle, that might be a hundred thousand dollars from a, a learning perspective. And it's been approved by the grant, our city is big enough from a, a fiscal, the financial flow or cash flow wise. That, that money could be floated and then reimbursed. Um, or while you're waiting for the bond to be sent in that disbursement. Because there are spending rules and the rules on this one, from what I understand, are June of twenty five. So if approved, this has to happen rapidly, and then we're reimbursed for all of it. Whereas some things like the revolving, uh, grants, you get approved a percentage in reimbursement versus a hundred percent. This is supposed to be a hundred percent.
Member Bowden?
Thank you, I just want to understand, because you kind of lost me in there somewhere. Um, so it sounds like this is basically a grant that we've been approved for. But we put the money up out of our own pockets, basically, and they reimburse us for that money. Why does it go to referendum if, if it's not like, like we have to match this amount? Or tha- that's what I'm trying to understand, um, why, why would this have to be voted on? Okay, so you don't, so, but I still don't understand why it would have to be voted on by the city or even by the city council. Like, that doesn't make any sense to me either, why would the city council have to approve this? Is, is it because it wouldn't be coming out of school budget funds, it would be coming out of city funds?
No.
Or because the city council oversees the school budget, or I'm just trying to figure this out?
It's about bond. Yeah, it's because it's, it's, it's because it's a bond and it, it was, it's borrowed money. So anytime that the city has borrowed money, that's a liability, because it's gonna be in Lewiston Public Schools' name. Even though the bond is one hundred percent paid back by the state. But it's still, it's like when we build a, a new school, that money is bonded, it's, it's borrowed. But it's, it's reimbursed back to the city of Lewiston, which then pays the bond back.
But this would be like, no contributions would be needed from taxpayers for this? Other than a loan?
Some extent, it's all tax money, but this would not be a local ask.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so, s- right, and even some of those things, like we have to have bond council. If we have to have, if we had to have a referendum, those costs we can include in that bond, which then gets reimbursed. So, you know, tonight is really to say, to kind of like, hey, we, we've been selected to be able to do this. So we, we, we want to have approval to, to continue this process and it is going to be a step process. The next step is going to be talking with the lawyers and seeing exactly what we have to do, ensure that it's not a referendum. If it's just a city council vote, wonderful, and then um, complete the application with the bond bank and then ultimately get the funds.
Okay, so.
Could I just add to that real quick?
Yeah.
There's bond bank timelines, so there, there's, there's a time in which the, the, the trust will issue bonds, which is. In and around this time of year or just in, in a little while, at least you have the application process, I think it's due end of November or something to that effect. Uh, is it October, November, October, uh, so that's a bond bank piece, uh, separate of us. But in that criteria for this, the funding may not be available until May. And it has to be spent by end of June. And so I think part of this is, again, we're a bigger district, it's, it's less to, to, to take on. In relation to the size of our, of our city, but for a smaller district to float that kind of money is a, is a significant piece. But to submit for the bond by bond bank rules, we have to have approvals.
Okay.
But we, we had to call legal to say, we need help with this, we also reached out to places like Bedford that are similar to us. Structure-wise to say, how are you approaching this? Um, and we've, I've actually heard back from two different superintendents, um, one who's just gonna go to referendum, at least that's what they think right now. And another who's very similar, who said, pretty sure that city council is enough to do this project, so.
Okay.
But at no cost us.
So I'm like, I'm, I'm totally cool with like, let's give, you know, if we have this money and, and we can help out. Um, our LRTC with equipment and, and getting students more trained and ready. Um, for the real world, that's, that's amazing, I'm all for it. I just worry if this isn't communicated correctly to the community. Um, this will get shot down because we all know what the budget season was just like. And, you know, it's sa- it just sounds kind of sketchy, so. But I'm all for it if it's actually not gonna cost us anything and we're not gonna have to like, pay for, for a- anything. Um, with tax money that I'm, well, like, local, let me say that differently, it's all tax money. But if there is no um, local piece to it, where, where our taxes are gonna go up because of it, I'm all for it.
Member McGluffin?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions about the process as well, so just to restate, so city of Lewiston puts out a bond. And then after that's issued, the state municipal bond bank pays us back immediately? And for a hundred percent or, or it transfers and they make the bond payments over the usual time period?
So I think it's a lump sum payback, um, so we'll get a lump sum and the state will, it will use that lump sum to reconcile. Uh, invoices that, at that point, if they're approved, we will have.
Yeah.
Cause we will, we have to move sooner than.
Yeah.
May, obviously, and then so that replaces our coffers for what was spent. They would reconcile the invoices and then the state pays the bond bank.
And so.
Issuance.
Do you, is this a, who like owns this program? Is it the bond bank or is it the Department of Education or something, or?
So I, go ahead, Bill and Rob, if you want.
No one wants to answer.
I have, I have some conspiracy theories, uh, but I, I think at the end of the day, I, I think in part, there was a big push. Um, uh, this might be an overstep, but there was a big push when the naval air station closed in Brunswick. To do certain things for equipment and, and to really make a, a push. And I, part of my, um, I'll be real careful with my theory, but. Part of my thinking is there was some movement to secure funds, to do something big in Brunswick specifically. And I think when that moved through the legislative process, I think people were, were finding some interest in, well, everybody needs equipment. And so there, there was born this RFA process to apply for these funds, but with all of these series of steps that. Um, are unique, we, we've not done a grant like this before that has the bond connections to it. Um, Rob, you want to add to the, the complexities of this and how it's gone with DOE and other superintendents and directors?
Yep, so, uh, so the, the legislature is, is the sort of the short answer to the question that was just asked earlier. About how it sort of got a little bit more complicated. Um, you recall when I came up and did my buzz, budget presentation last, uh, spring or so? I reminded that the legislature, uh, approved an EPS formula for CTE. You know, which is a little different from K twelve schools, that does not include equipment. So everything that is uh, capital equipment really is either a local ask or we're going out to some of our partners in industry. And looking for those kind of donations of equipment. And as you know, uh, oftentimes it's substantial because the equipment we utilize is, is, is uh, you know, um, complex and, and technology-rich. So it, it usually has a big price tag. So the legislature approved two twenty million dollar grants, the last legislature, that's, that was the hundred and thirty first. Um, the first we applied for and did not receive money for, that was a infrastruc- uh, infrastructure grant. The second was the equipment piece of that and, and we did receive, we applied for a million one and we got nine hundred and eighty thousand. Um, somewhere in the, in the time between, it was, it was actually written and submitted this summer. We just found out about two weeks ago that we got it. Um, and somewhere, uh, in that approval process, it was decided by the state that it would go through this bond bank. Um, which interestingly, didn't happen with the first uh, infrastructure piece, I'm not sure why. Um, but basically the ask was that we utilize the bond bank to secure, um. You know, to secure uh, um, an attorney and make sure that it fits with our, our, our municipal structures. Um, again, because there are centers like us and there are also regions, um, which are a little bit more autonomous, CTE regions. Um, everybody seems to have a different approach or need to approach, um, you know, this, this uh, bond bank issue. So again, in Bangor, for example, where they're a region, they're going out to referendum to thirty different municipalities. To have this approved, which has really been a headache for them. Um, I think by contrast, we're, as, as Jake, uh, mentioned earlier, we're probably a little bit more fortunate. In that the center lives under the auspices of, of Lewiston Public Schools. Um, you're our fiscal agent, so therefore, again, our, our current thinking is that it's uh, uh, something that we could do through the school committee. And then the city council. Um, again, just to repeat, this would be a hundred percent reimbursable. Uh, that the attorney's fees and even the referendum fees that should come to that are also, um, uh. Allowable under this, under this expense.
Quick follow-up, just to kind of close my line here, so just to be clear, there's no, there's no way that the city can just do it themselves, right? Like, it's, it's a school program, so, because the city doesn't have to get a referendum on every bond that they do. But the school potentially does above a certain size, so that can't just kind of shift it over there because it's going to you.
My understanding is that the way that this was structured, the way the award was restructured from the state. Is that they're requiring all of the, the awardees to, to go through the bond bank to do this.
Alright, okay.
Member Eames?
I'd just to, like to remind Scott that uh, every referendum costs, I think Kathy said fifteen hundred for the city. Just to do a referendum, and so that when we had to go back and do ours a few times, she said that. So if the city council could do it, it would be saving local share, local taxpayers' money.
Yes, cost of the hairman.
I agree, and I think maybe you meant fifteen thousand dollars, yeah.
And her number depended on if it was printed by the state or if we had to print them locally too, that was a variation on it, yes.
Yeah.
Member Heard?
Thank you, um, so my two cents is, is the state is making it a pain in the butt. Because they don't want to actually give us the money, so they're gonna make you jump through all these hoops in hopes that you say no. Um, but that's my two cents, um, I just had a quick question, are any of the funds gonna be used for our new location over in Auburn? Or just here in, at, at this location?
Yep, so the, uh, the, the funds, I, and if it helps, I, I would go through, there's just, there's five or a few, four or five pieces to this. The first, as Jake mentioned, is an electric vehicle, um, which will reside here with our automotive programs. Um, again, that's designed to be sort of built and rebuilt by students, um, and that, that includes every. Uh, from braking systems to all the electrical pieces, the battery trays and all that sort of thing. So again, that would be something our hope is to not only have here at the high school, but to take on the road to the middle school and so forth. The students of all ages could see how an electrical vehicle, uh, operates. Um, we have two, uh, medical mannequins that would be part of our medical science and CNA programs. And again, these are, um, programs that can, that are automated and are interactive, so we can program to do a whole bunch or, or. Um, have a whole bunch of different medical, medical responses that, that students would be training with. Um, we also have, uh, sort of an aging sawdust collection bin system here. Um, it sometimes looks like a snow globe in our shops when we have all the, a lot of machines, uh, fired up. Um, and that would be something that we'd be replacing. And then finally, it's something we're very excited with, is a partnership between our engineering program and the University of Maine Engineering School. Um, we've developed a series of micro credentials, um, in a number of, uh, engineering aspects. And so the, uh, the last piece of this would be to buy a number of trainers that our students could work with. Um, become introduced to technology, um, and processes, which hopefully they would continue not through high school. And then into, um, the University of Maine, uh, engineering program. Um, so those would all reside on, on this campus to answer your question.
Thank you, um, okay, so I'd like to make a motion to. Approve you to go forward with whatever you feel like you have to do to get this money approved.
Somebody like to second it and then we'll have further discussion.
I'll second that beautiful motion.
Did you get all that language?
So is it, is it accurate to say that the motion is to direct the superintendent to further pursue approval steps to, uh, take advantage of this grant?
Yes, that's exactly what she said. Any further questions, member Bowden? Um, are there, is there any interest with this bond that we would have to? Pay or worry about, isn't that how bonds work, like, am I? I don't know, like, I don't fully understand, I'm sorry.
I think the, the confusing part is the way in which the state has secured. I think the, the confusing part is the way in which the state has secured the funds to do this grant. But because of the way they secured the funds to do this grant, we have to abide by those umbrellas.
I just, I thought there was like a risk when you did a bond as far as like.
Yeah, it's a municipal bond, so it's different from like investing.
Okay.
Which I had to learn a, a ton about.
Okay.
After the college project and closing that up.
That's what I don't understand. All right. So it's different.
It is, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Member McLaughlin.
Just real quick, if uh, I could, if it does have to go to referendum, if I can just encourage. Uh, the administration to work very closely with the city clerk on the phrasing of the question. Cause if it's just a simple, do you approve this bond? You know, uh, who, I don't think people are going to be for that right now, but if it's very clear that it's paid for. By the bond bank at the state level, it's not a local tax thing. I think that is very necessary to be clear on the piece of paper that they're voting on. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Uh, agenda item number nine is to you, to discuss the use of building, being built by Lewiston Regional Technical Center programs and potentially being used to replace aging modulars.
So this is really a, a conversation starter. Um, Director Callahan has been uh, talking with us about um. Perspective buyers for the modular home that's being built right across the, the parking lot here. Yep. So um, they're at a place right now where they're, they're prepared to and ready to build out the partitions. Like what's the interior of the space going to look like as far as a rough framing perspective? And um, Bill and I were walking around, looking at the modulars that are in need of repair and or replacement and considering LCIP funds that have been appropriated. Uh, but they're not. There's not enough of the funds to do certain things. And so. Not really on a whim, but just being thoughtful of what would it take to? What if that structure was used to replace modular setup? It's designed for a foundation. Where, where would it go? How would we prioritize that? How would they finish the build out if it was going to be used as school-based uses? And so just wanted to share with you all that we're having that conversation. Um, it would be less expensive, I believe. In the long run and, and present as far better quality than a modular um, that is more mobile home style build. Uh, but it would also allow for the learning to continue that if, if they can sell that for what they need to sell it for to the district, if you will. It would allow them to have the seed money to do the next one. And so the idea is that this will, over time, you know, land homes in our community. It will. Land as spaces that are useful and, and help our community grow. But we also have a predicament right now where we have spaces that need to be improved. Um, but to do this, we would have to pursue um. More of a concept of what should the spaces have? What are the codes for that space? But also if it needs to sit on a foundation, what school grounds could it go to? We'd have to have a conversation with city to say from a permitting and building perspective. What are our limitations there? So there's more conversation to have, but we wanted to put it in front of you. Not necessarily had to vote on, but want to get your input on, should we continue to, to take those steps as a potential use of the LCIP funds and use that structure or see if we can? Or should we just um, let them continue on their, their home build and go from there?
Member Bowden.
Thanks. Um, it's kind of brilliant. Uh, but it seems like that particular modular is being built. Um, seems big. Or, I mean, is that, is that bigger than the modulars that we currently have in place? Not that that's a bad thing, but. Um, the modulars, I don't feel like are the size of homes.
So I think that one is either ten or twenty feet longer.
Okay.
Than um, some of the modulars that we have, particularly over at McMahon.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking of. That's, that's what I'm familiar with. So would that particular modular, if you were. To turn that into something for the school, um, would it be equipped with like a restroom in it?
So potentially that's kind of the, the, the exploration here as far as what we can do code-wise, what we can, can we get the plumbing out there? We know we have electrical to those, but can we get the plumbing there? What is that going to, what is that going to entail? How much, you know, do we have in the budget from LCIP to be able to do that? But ideally, I'd love to say that we're going to have water and plumbing out there, but.
And then from, you know, like a perspective of like, you know, if you're building a house and you're framing the inside of the house and, and putting rooms in. The kids are going to kind of miss out on that with a modular for an elementary school, for example. I, it's a big open room, right? They wouldn't have to frame out rooms in there necessarily. So I just wonder like. You know, would it take away from? Some of the learning that the kids would do if, if that's what you were solely working on with those modulars or? Do you know what I'm saying? Yeah, okay.
So I think, I, I think it's an interesting question because um, it'll, it would allow us in another way to, to um, work with a, a customer here. Um, and sort of build to uh, internal specifications. So the, the great news is. We've completed the wall systems, the floor systems and the roof systems, which you know, they've gotten a really thorough kind of exposure to. Um, as we're starting that internal framing process, a lot of it is similar to some of the things that we've done already. But again, it would be, um, it would be a conversation between the district and that, and those students. About what this should look like to, to house students and you'll get, are we going to include bathrooms and where and so on? So I, I think it would just be sort of a twist on, on what we're currently working on. Um. You know, it is a, it is a, a package that we bought from Ham and Lumber. Um, so again, it can be modified. We have sketches and drawings and, and we have the capacity to modify those if we need to, so.
I'm sorry, how much of a loss would we be looking at? Like if, if, I feel like if you were to sell this to somebody as their home. Um. The price would be higher on it than if we were to take it and put it on one of our. School lots. So I'm just wondering like what sort of loss would you guys be looking at financially?
So Rob and in those programs, they have some limitations. They can't, they can't just go sell something necessarily at top of market rate. Um, because it's a school build, it has some limitations on what they could ask. Um, I, I don't know if you want to speak to that more, Rob, but from that perspective, we, we would be approaching it as the customer buying. So whatever that rate is for their, the work and the whatnot, um, is all things that I would anticipate the school pay. Uh, cause again, the intent of that is to have seed money to do the next one. Uh, so to keep that project moving forward. I would also want to add that if this becomes a reality, yeah, it could have its own plumbing. It could have its own basement that could be used for storage. It could have daylight capacity. It could be something else underneath that could be useful to the district. Um, it, it's also going to require. All of the permitting and a crane and moving of a, you know, a building. So it's, it's uh. It wouldn't be a small thing to take on, but I, I do see some benefits. Um, but cost-wise, uh, I would assume that we would be at. You know, the, whatever the market is that he's allowed to sell it for. Um, and it's really built around costs uh, to, to do the structures. I don't know if you want to add to that, Rob?
I, I guess I would just say it, it's been our intention the entire time to just really re uh, recoup our initial investment. You know, I think we paid something in the, in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the package. Um, we've spent, you know, extra on some, some additional items. But really the hope is to just get that seed money for our next build, you know, so that students have that opportunity as well.
Member Heard.
Thank you. Um, I actually think this is a great idea, especially if you're going to put it. Like my kiddos are McMahon. So for me, I'm thinking you're bringing this to the school. Students get to see like this is an option that we get to potentially pursue as I go through LPS. They're seeing other students actually come and work on it and do it. Maybe they can tour it. Maybe your students can talk to the kids about what they're doing. Like I just see this as like a much bigger picture to get more kids interested in LRTC and the trade and like what. Lewiston has to offer, not that elementary age students are necessarily thinking at that time, you know, but it's kind of just something cool that they can see and look at and. Um, so I think it's a great idea.
Member Glant.
Uh, yes, what is the turnaround time? How, you know, when could they expect? These, this modular to be done?
Rob might be able to answer the modular question, but site-wise, I, I don't know yet. It, it, it's really going to take some steps to figure out. What's allowable, what's not? Um, the modules are being used currently. So is this a summer thing? Is this? Is this a displacement scenario, which is concerning to me? So from a school perspective, as, as kind of the buyer and the site prep people. It, it's going to take a lift. Uh, and I don't know if, if the, the building itself will be ready. June of twenty-six. I don't see it being ready June of twenty-five, but I, Rob could speak to that.
I, I would defer to our, our, our instructor, Jason Merrick about, about that. I mean. One of the things that we'll do is, again, it's got a hinged roof that will drop. Um, the house actually comes apart and gets swung up on a crane. And then a low boy will transport it um, to, you know, to a, with a site. We'll reassemble it. So there'll be some amount of work that will be done onsite once it's, once it's deployed there. But students are making really good progress. We have really two great sections of um, carpentry students and then the electrical students and plumbing students have begun it. You know, to, to start their plans as well. So it's, it's, it's really exciting and I, and I suspect. You'll see a lot of progress on it over the late fall and the winter. Uh, students will be out there. Um, we do have a heated workspace just adjacent to it, so we'll continue right through the school year.
Member McLaughlin.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea as well. Um, and it really does, I think. Open up a lot of opportunities to keep doing this in, in, in partnership with others in the region that do this kind of work. I mean, I know CMCC. I'm sure you work a lot with them on this, but you know, they're working on more of a modular program and they're still a modular builder in South Paris. Um, and, but I, I was also thinking. For the, will they get to do some of the onsite finishing work as well, which I know takes a special. Or at least a different license in Maine where being a general contractor does not. So that might be an interesting kind of career look as well.
Yep. The good news is that again, we have a, a master electrician and a master plumber, um, you know, on our staff. Um, and we have some, some very skilled tradespeople all around. But yeah, I, I guess the other exciting thing that I'd mentioned. Is that we're really looking uh, to put some green, sustainable technologies, you know, in, in terms of insulation, windows and, and so forth into this structure. So that it's a real benefit to whoever ends up owning it. Um, and that, and then they'll. You know, see some real benefits as it relates to lower utility costs and so forth. So we're trying to build it as smartly as possible.
Councilor Herriman.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think this sounds like a great idea too. Uh, really a way for students to, to be able to show off their pride in what they've built. Rather than, you know, if it goes to be someone's home, it's not like there are going to be people through it all the time and you can go up and walk around it. Um, where it's a school building or if it does become a school building, then um, it really lends itself to that. And I think it's a, a smart idea and I wish we could build more of them, but I'm sure that the, the capacity is, is limited based on the, um, you know, because you're doing education while you're building.
Member Ames.
Just curious how much a modular off, you know, to bring in a modular pre-made, how much would that be? Would this be? Uh, I know there's a lot of benefits in and of itself, but is there also a financial benefit or not?
So potentially yes. Uh, and Bill might have some numbers that he can share. Um, but I don't want to get ahead of myself because when you buy a modular and it comes in and it goes on, you know. Legs or stays on wheels, but gets shored up. You're not adding a foundation underneath where, so from a site prep perspective. But I would also say that the lifespan of a modular we're hearing is somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five years. And the lifespan of this structure, if done right, could be. As long as you take care of it. Uh, uh, so it, it, it could be a totally different approach.
Yeah, I, I would just add. You never know until you get fully into the plans and everything. Remember when I was talking about our um. Applications for school construction, you know, what site we would use and stuff. And so, so we don't know, but. A modular is an expensive item. Uh, two, a two classroom modular is, you know. Pushing around a million dollars to get that done. So um, the LCIP request, I think we're at about eight hundred thousand dollars and it was kind of trimmed down. So that was kind of limiting what we could do. So. This could be about the same cost. This, this could be um, less, it could be more, but. That's really where we're moving now is to say, okay, if this is kind of the direction we're going in, then what do we need to do? Where can we put this? What kind of site preps do we have to do? What kind of like commercial things do we have to ensure that we have in that building for life safety equipment? Does it need sprinkler systems and whatnot? So.
And I just want to add, because that's kind of sticker shock, but that includes permitting, site prep, um, takeaway, you know, because they, we don't need the old one and I'm not trying to save those. Uh, but it's, so it's, it's all of those pieces all the way up to including tying it into the existing structure and all of those pieces. So that, that's where that bigger number comes from.
Do you need anything from us?
I think I just wanted to make sure I wasn't marching down a path that um, there was, there was big contention about. Um, but also uh, I think this feedback gives us enough to start having that conversation with Rob and his team. Around the structure itself and, and making sure we're prepping it for code if we're going to use it in this way and seeing what it costs to. What's the feasibility and, and putting it wherever it's going to go?
Thank you. Um, agenda item number ten is to review and potentially vote on the second read of policies listed as A through O. Member Heard.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second reading of the following policies listed A through O.
Yes. Sorry, I just wanted to share, there was a question, a couple of questions last time um, about a couple of the policies specifically around the um. Procedures with the harassment and discrimination. Um. I think Member McLaughlin asked about the num, the switch from business days to school days. I did check with legal and it was for the reasons that we thought. To give schools the opportunity to do those investigations when students and staff were in, were, were here. Um, so that was the change for, the reason for the change there. And the other question was around the hostile en, environment. And without getting really deep into that, into that, um. I can't think today. What's the word I want? Just uh, definition. There we go. Um. It really, it, there's a couple of different places to, to reference, but the, the word limit is in that definition. And if, if we think about the access being limited versus not being, not being able to be accessed at all. It helps with that definition. And so legal talked about how they were very, they wanted to make sure that. Um, it is a little different from staff and students, but having access to educational programming or to work. If it's limited in any way versus not. Students are not able to be in those spaces with the, the person or the, the people that they may be. Having the investigation with. So I don't know. I hope that helps, but those were the answers to, to the questions that you had.
Is there a second? Member Bowden? Seconded by Member Bowden. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Agenda item number eleven is report from the chair. Um, the only thing I have to report on, I think this is since our last meeting, there was the community forum on safety. Um, I don't know if Councilor Herriman will talk more on that. He was there and involved in that. Um, but I, uh, that went really well as far as starting the planning steps. For some um, movement in the city for um, towards some safety. Uh, so that's all I have for today. Um, number twelve is the report from superintendent.
Uh, just wanted to update you on a few things. Um, the SRO inquiry is still ongoing. Um, I had been told uh, by uh, Chief St Pierre that. Uh, right now there are a number of officers short, so getting someone to put in, should we find the funding or use existing funds? Is not something really on the horizon currently. I've also had a discussion, a pretty long discussion with um, state level folks that are working in and around school safety. And can we, and what are the rules around and what policy might have to shift? To take a different approach where you have SROs in your schools, but you can also hire someone who might be auxiliary for security. Um, they cannot carry firearms according to statute. Um, there's some FERPA related things we may have to look at, but. I'm really trying to explore the possibility of um, you know, retired police officers or um, there's. There, there's lots of folks that currently do ironically legal in the state of Maine contracting in places like courtrooms. Where retired military, retired police officers, they qualify, they can carry, they can carry out the duties of the job. But they're not specifically tied to a um, uh, a police department. In schools, the language doesn't allow for that. So that's a bigger policy conversation that I, I would love to have and continue to push so that we can open up some of those doors to have. Um, I, I could think of probably five offices off the top of my head that I've known and or worked with the Lewiston community that would take a job like that if it could be done right. Um, so we have some policy work to do there if we want to go that direction. Having said that. I am still looking at ways we can, we can coordinate and have more um, adult presence in that, in that vein. If the school committee chooses to, to do so. Um, but I'm still waiting for feedback. Um, I've gone back and forth with the state. They've been very good about the information, but we've gone back and forth to trying to figure out. What are the limitations? What are the allowable components? How to make sure we keep people in their right lane, uh, but also have more resource available that um, can, can be of. Um, can, can be available to do some reactive type things and some surveillance like things if that's what we so decided to do.
Member Boden.
Um, so if we bring in somebody retired to kind of like stand post or whatever, you said they can't carry. Um, can they carry a taser?
So I asked that question and so non-lethal means is part of what I'm waiting for feedback on.
Okay.
Uh, the initial response was they didn't think they could carry, uh, non-lethal means of that nature. But I, I have to continue to get more input.
Well, I only, I, I mean, it, isn't that kind of the point to have somebody, you know, if something were to happen, God forbid at our schools. You, you need to have a way to stop the threat and I understand. I don't agree, but I understand not being able to carry. Um, but I, but I think they need to have some way to stop. Somebody who does have a gun that shouldn't have a gun in our school.
Yeah.
For example.
Yeah, I, I want to add to that too. And some of the questions I asked was, okay, so this is more of a collective bargaining agreement. Union question. Would say a local police union allow for a side agreement? To contract with people through the schools to have a teacher salary like position while they maintain their law enforcement credentials. So a big part of it is credentials and maintaining training and things of that nature. Um, but what happens right now, we have some folks who might be excellent SROs who, who don't do it because. The, the school year can be funky in schedule and then you are on patrol. Um, but I'm very curious how many people, again, whether it's retired or approaching retirement would say. I'll go do that for a teacher salary and have my summers to myself, maintain my credentials as required. But that structure doesn't currently exist. So that was a really interesting line of conversation that we were having and, and. And again, started getting into the policy and procedure piece. So there's the, the side agreement piece with law enforcement. That would, would need to be some kind of MOU, but that would extend outside of our kind of. Say modus of control or locus of control. So, uh. But yeah, I, so I'm looking at all these different potential possibilities because I agree, having someone in a, you know, a, uh. You know, blank security company, you know, small efficient car driving around campuses that can just get out and say, hey, you there, stop. To me it lacks, if the school committee wanted to do something different, uh, or add to, um. You'd want it to have some abilities and, and I, I think that there's limitations there. Again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't just do this. This would come back to you with, here's what we're looking to do. Here's the structure potentially. Um, it'd be a cost associated, but.
Member McLaughlin.
Just a quick clarification. So we, the school district is currently allowed to hire somebody for security. As long as they don't carry any lethal or potentially non-lethal weapon, or is it both of that? And whether or not they can carry a weapon is subject to, that would require some kind of state legal change.
Um, I try to answer this right, the right way. To put, uh, uh, an individual in a school. That would work underneath the, the job description or, um, the responsibilities like an SRO. You need to be connected specifically to law enforcement. Uh, so you have to be an employee of a police department. And the, the thinking behind that, from what I understand historically is it's because of the firearms training, the safety training. Um, RS or SROs have both law enforcement, but also school resource officer training. Um, and as a school, we can't really perform that function, right? So like Jake, Jake's not out on Friday because he's at the range with. With the security detail, um, as much as I might be willing to do that, it's not. I don't think that lands under non-specified tasks. Um, but there are qualified people that do this and, and the level, the level of training for law enforcement. Is far greater than a lot of people realize. And so that training and that responsiveness, um, is very intentional and. Like we don't do that as teachers and educators, but I am curious about the, the limitation or the possibility of a sign agreement. Again, would land in like, we're here, it would be, um, Lewiston Police Department's. Collective bargaining union for police officers agreeing to have a position that functions this way. And then we would have to have an MOU to compensate them for their school year commitment and somehow their training and all of that. Side stepping that, um, specific connection to law enforcement, you could have security guard like folks. But the initial feedback is they cannot carry anything that would be labeled or defined as a weapon. So you, right, we could, I, we could hire someone who just kind of stays proximate to our schools, looks for things that might be out of sorts. And call them in, report them, keep a log of, hey, you know, this door was found open twice and we gotta, we gotta be on that. So, so there could be some. Some functional use to, um, a position like that, but no, they could not carry a baton or a taser or anything like that is my understanding. But that is part of what I asked for clarification.
Member heard.
Thank you. Um, so first I want to say thank you because I feel like, um, some members have asked for this a lot. And it was discussed a lot during budget season and unfortunately that position was, that new position was cut. So, um, I just want to say thank you for thinking outside the box and, you know, looking at all of our options. Um, in the meantime, and I feel like, and again, I don't know the whole process, but I feel like. Some have maybe been asking this and I feel like I myself have been asking this from when I first came onto the school committee, but. Um, and I don't know if it's possible to. Where the, all the elementary schools share one SRO, if there is a schedule that that SRO would be. At all of the schools once a week or, you know, that's perfect world, right? Um, one for the safety because I feel like unless you're at the school where the resource officer resides, you. There is nothing, you don't get anything. You're not visited often. Um, and when you are visited, then it becomes. Well, why is, why is he here? Why is this an issue? So for instance, I'm just going to say one day last week, the SRO was at McMahon. And I got probably twenty calls or text messages from parents. Why is he here? What's going on? Is there something I need to be worried about? Do I need to come get my kids? Like what's happening? Is there an emergency? Like, you know, because it's not a normal occurrence. It creates, especially with everything that's going on in our city, it creates an unsettled type of vibe. I guess is what I'm saying. So, and I don't know if that's an option to set a schedule. Again, I don't know what the requirements are at. The school that this resource officer resides at, but I think as a, I don't think any of our building admins would. Turn away the resource officer if he wanted to come visit once a week, you know what I mean? So, and I don't know how we go about that. I don't know if that's even for us to say, like, I don't know how the contract works with our local SROs and what input we have. Um, with them, but I would just ask if that's an option.
We, we have asked for that, um, and I know that's in the works. I think there's a schedule, the, um. But I asked for it to be put to something so that I can see it. So I know what to expect. Um, so we can check on that for sure. Okay, uh, some, some other items, I, I think you all have heard this, but just to say for those who might watch this, um, from home or later. Um, we are providing a lot of input wherever we can around funding for schools. Uh, so the, the MEPRE is doing a review of the EPS formula and taking feedback and suggestions. So. Um, whether the world wants to hear me or not, just, just know that my voice is out there, uh, in numerous ways and platforms, making sure people know that. Uh, there, there's some, some real concerns around, uh, the funding model, um, not using. Data for research that they've done over the last ten years to improve the model, that the information exists already. Um, things like unfunded mandates that don't feel like big unfunded mandates, but they start to pile up. Um, so we're providing feedback on that, uh, and also the, um, the paid family medical leave. Um, rulemaking is occurring, so we provide a feedback to that. Uh, so in that stage of the legislative process is about to start to turn its wheels again, they're gathering input and we're trying to make sure that our voice is at the table. Uh, if you catch wind of some kind of import session or anything like that, that you feel like Lewiston Public Schools should be represented. Please just shoot me a message. Uh, they can sometimes creep up on you during the session to know when they're going to be, but, uh, if it's relevant. We, we want to share our voice where we can. Um, and the last thing I have, at least for right now is, um. Some pretty, uh, in-depth and intentional thought has been put into the twenty-fifth of October. Um, and we're using the term commemoration, uh, on purpose, uh. One of the things we're trying to pull together, uh, currently and, and some messaging has started about it. You know how we do the parade of graduates every spring? We put the kids on a bus and we bring them to a school and the, the graduates walk through the school of their choice. And the kids get to see the graduates and hopefully think about, well, that's a family member or cousin or someone I know, or I want to be that someday. Uh, those kinds of things. Um, we're inviting first responders to do that on the twenty-fifth. So we're going to pick a centralized location. We've sent some invites out to, to folks. We're hopeful those spread the word. We try to hit everyone. But to invite people to, um, the centralized spot where they can just, just gather, put them on buses. And then have them go to different schools and depending on the turnout, one school, two schools, maybe a few. Um, and just walk the halls and give the kids a chance to say thank you, uh, try to support that effort. Um, but I think on a, on such a somber day to have something that I think could be good energy. Where kids could see professionals that they appreciate and professionals have a chance to, um, be thanked and recognized for the hard work that they do. So we're working on that.
Thank you. Now, agenda item number thirteen is a report from our city council rep.
Uh, so we had a meeting, uh, last week, city council meeting, we had a workshop with, um, members from the. Homeless Shelter Committee and, uh, worked through, we got through about half of the potential changes to the homeless shelter ordinance. That we're making. So still plugging away on that. Um, and also the community safety meeting that was mentioned. That was back on Thursday, the twelfth at Connors. Uh, we went through, for those who weren't there. Um, sort of a, well, first, Amran Osman sort of recapped. What we had gone through at previous meetings and then we did a design challenge process, which, um. I don't, I can't really explain it that well, but it's, um, uh, I've done it before with Julia from Tree Street. And it's, it's just a really interesting way to tackle a particular problem and come up with a solution or proposed solution for it. Um, we, some of us reconvened on Monday, the sixteenth at Longley. It was a smaller group. Counselor Soul was also there and our team sort of dove into. Exploring mentorship options for middle school age students and, um. To hopefully, you know, make sure that, that students all stay on a, a good productive path. And don't really, don't fall into some of these other behaviors that we're seeing. Um, so what we came up with first was a. Survey to ask middle schoolers, um, what sort of things they would want to see from a mentor. Um, so that's our first step and we're meeting again on Monday, the thirtieth at Longley. And that's all I've got for my update.
Thank you. Um, any updates from subcommittees? Member Eames?
Uh, as to the, uh, policy subcommittee, got the good word from Erin. That we're getting really close to ha- closing in on the end of the first cycle of revisions and updates. Is that correct? Yes. Um, so, uh, you'll see a few more from us in the next meeting, I guess, or the one after that. But it's starting to wind down a bit. So that's wonderful. I don't know if Donna, you want to speak about the curriculum? Uh, she's, okay, I will, I will, uh, speak for Donna and myself about the curriculum subcommittee that has. Kicked off, uh, for this cycle and, uh, we spent, um, two days this week. On curriculum. Uh, we had a meeting and then the next day we had an all-day so- social studies, elementary level. Social studies curriculum planning meeting. Those are going to be every few weeks for the rest of the year. Um, and I find those one wonderful. I love those kinds of things. So that was enjoyable for me. Um, and I, as the, uh, rep, the liaison, I guess I should mention that the MSBA. Is having a. I guess it's like a delegate assembly where they revise the bylaws. And the two or the couple of revisions that they're proposing are minor. I just don't feel like you need to look at them. But they came to you. If you care to look at them, do, but they're very minor. So I wouldn't bother yourself, honestly. Um, but that is coming up.
Thank you. Any other subcommittee meet? Nope. All right. Uh, number fifteen is community announcements. Member heard.
Thank you. Um, so I've been actually waiting for the city to post something about this and they haven't. But the pickleball courts over on North Temple are open and accessible. And every time I drop off in the morning, the last two weeks, there are people there bright and early. Um. We've taken the kiddos over, um, to use them and they are obsessed. So that is something we will be doing until they close down. Um, but there are four or six. Four, I'm trying to think, one, two, three. Yeah, I think four. Um, but they did a, the city did a great job. They planted some shrubs and they tarred. And it's very nice and pretty. Um, so if you are in the area, I urge you to pop on over and take a peek.
Thank you. Member Boden?
Just want to give a sports update. I feel like that's kind of my thing now. Um. I believe our football team at Lewiston High School is undefeated right now, two and O, which is pretty incredible. That's a really good start for them. Um, the boys soccer team is undefeated as well, which no surprise there. Um, I think the field hockey team is awesome. Last I knew they were undefeated as well, which is amazing. Volleyball is doing great. Um, and the girls soccer team won their first game in four years. So that doesn't sound that exciting. But for us, it was like, it was like winning a state championship when they won that game. So, and they beat Oxford Hills. Which is not small. So I'm, I'm so, so proud of those girls. Um, but yeah, the, the. Sports at Lewiston High School are doing amazing this season. It's really fun to watch.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. Um, so member heard reminded me that this Thursday at eleven thirty, there's actually a ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts. Um, and then I just wanted to remind folks that this Friday, starting at five o'clock is the final art walk for the season.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? Um, future agenda items. Member Glant?
Um, yes, the, uh, my understanding is that there isn't a formal. Um, bullying policy or procedure, not policy, but, um. A, uh, agenda or teaching, um, curriculum, ah, thank you. Um, for the, for the younger kids, for the element five and below. And I, I still am very interested in seeing about that. I mean, perhaps we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And we could look to see what other school districts throughout the, the nation, if there's anything that they're doing. Um, and that's, that's what I would like to see.
Thank you. Member heard.
Thank you. Um, just to piggyback that off that for one quick second, I think. As a district, we try and take on as many problems and issues as we can. Um, but I also think that. Especially at that age, it might be. Good to maybe hold like a parent form or something so we can show parents how they can talk to their kids about bullying. Because I really do think it starts at home. You can, you can do all you want in the classroom, but it's really, it's. It becomes a parent's responsibility to teach their kids right and wrong. Um, so I don't know if there's, like I said, like a parent form. Or something we can send home to parents, like this is how you talk to your kids about bullying. This is what to look for, um, those types of things. Um, and kind of see where that gets us instead of maybe adopting a, a curri- curriculum or putting something in. And I know we do stuff like different, um, what's the word I'm thinking of?
We have things. Our rule of curriculum is, is.
Right, but we do a lot of, um, what the heck are they called? On our half days, assemblies, there we go. We invite people in for assemblies and half days and stuff like that. And I do think they do talk a lot about those types of situations with our elementary students, which. I don't, you don't have any own, yeah. Okay, so. We, at McMahon, we just had the coach of Lewiston High School Football come and talk to the students. And so that was a big thing and he handed out bracelets and both my kids came home and told me all the things that they talked about. So I think it is happening in our schools. Um, it's just not an actual like class or something like that.
Member Boden?
It's not a future agenda item, but I just thought of one more community announcement. I'm sorry. It's not a future agenda item, but I just thought of one more community announcement. I'm sorry. Um, homecoming this year at the high school is October 5th. Um, there are numerous sports games that day and then the dance that evening. And I believe I just saw tickets are going on sale and they're $20 apiece. That sound right? What's that? I'm pretty sure it was $20, but yeah, that's coming right up on October 5th.
Any other future agenda items? Um, I don't know when it could happen, but if we could just work something into a future agenda, um, where we spell out the public comment, um, our policies and what's in procedural rules and what's in the charter and all of that, because there seems to be a lot of questions around that. Um, and then we can just like itemize where these things are documented so that the public has a better understanding of it. I think that would be helpful. Um, agenda item number 17 is to enter into executive session to conduct student A disciplinary hearing, title 20A10019 and title 14056B.
So moved.
All in favor?